Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Will everybody please rise? We have Pastor John Martin here with Celebration Church. He's going to lead some prayer to start. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. God, we love you and we thank you that we can be here tonight and we can represent this great city that we live in. Father, as we go through each one of these items, just trying to make improvements to this land that we live in, trying to expand it and make it even better. Father, I pray that you would give each one of these men and women here wisdom, guidance, knowledge, Father, just foresight, so that they can make Fairhope one of the greatest places in the entire world. Lord, I just pray that you would touch each one of them. In Jesus' name we pray. Everyone said?
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you Pastor Martin. I want to start, we're going to like to, wanted to walk something on tonight's agenda, which is to award bids for the retaining wall and electric substation in Nichols Avenue and Young Street to the Cowbaugh Construction LLC. Something that Mr. Peterson discussed during the work session and I will entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, so we will add that on and it will be number...
Twenty...
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. All right. And I mentioned this earlier, I don't want to mention it again now. For those of you here that want to discuss or that are here to watch any voting on the Live Oak Estates subdivision or proposal, or the Gaffer Village Partner subdivision proposal or PUD proposal, those have been pulled at the request of the owner and they will not be voted on or discussed at tonight's meeting. Also Resolution Number 10 for, in support of World Kindness USA has been pulled for, to make some, I'm sorry. The resolution has been pulled to make some changes that need to be made in order to fit the requirements of said resolution. We are not denying world kindness. All right, with that said, we'll go right into the agenda. At first will be the, number one is the approve the minutes of the October 28, 2019 regular city council meeting, minutes of the October 28, 2019 work session, and the agenda meeting, and the minutes of the October 31, 2019 special called city council meeting. Does anyone have any changes or edits that need to be made to those minutes?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Got a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And we will, number two is report of the mayor.
Thank you Councilman Robert Robinson. This year marks Alabama's 200th anniversary. The Alabama Department of Archives and History is sponsoring We the People Alabama's Defining Documents. This bicentennial exhibition of Alabama's six versions of the Constitution is accompanied by other special exhibitions in Montgomery at the Museum of Alabama at the Department of Archives and History. It will be on display from November 3rd to December 21st. So anybody heading north towards Montgomery, we encourage you to go see the exhibition and learn why we have six versions of the Constitution. Amazing, all the amendments there. Friends of the Fairhope Library and the Fairhope Museum of History have joined forces to present a program entitled 200 Years of Alabama Music in honor of Alabama's 200th. The program will be held at the library on Thursday, December 5th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And speaking of anniversaries, Fairhope was founded on November 15th in 1894. 125 years later, we will honor that event with a birthday party to be held at our history museum on Friday, November 15th from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Please join the mayor at this social as we celebrate the founding of our city. You are encouraged to come dressed in period costume. Friends of the museum will be judging costumes and give out a prize for the best one. More information can be found on the city's website. It's hard to believe, but the time is almost here. Again, the annual lighting of the trees will be held on Thursday, November 21st. Festivities begin at 5:30 and the lights come on at 6:00 PM sharp. Entertainment includes the Fairhope High School Band, the Fairhope Middle School Band, and the Eastern Shore Choral Society. Mrs. Claus will be there to take children's Christmas lists and hand deliver them to Santa at the North Pole. The Nick Center will once again have an angel tree. Last year, the tree was sold out in a manner of speaking. If you want to adopt a child for Christmas, check with the Nick Center to see how you and the angel tree can make a difference this Christmas. Sports play a big role in the lives of our Fairhope families. As our football season winds down, basketball kicks in. We are sorry and yet somehow oddly pleased to announce that this year's basketball participation has been maxed out to the point where we have had to turn children away for the first time ever. We are thrilled with the success of this program and I guess all we can do is remind parents to sign up their kids early next year. Unfortunately, our space is limited. Also, believe it or not, baseball is just around the corner. I want to thank the base, or the mayor wants to thank the baseball boosters who are funding a grandstand behind home plate. And to extend an even bigger thank you to these parents who ran fundraising events to raise money to build a new concession stand. The project is estimated at $65,000. The city donated $10,000 to this effort, but the parents who have been supporting their children for years raised the additional funds. Thank you. You are such huge supporters of our baseball kids and we appreciate all your efforts. And just in case you ever wondered what our city-supported sports programs do for our children, well, we are proud to tell you that the sons of two of our city employees who grew up in Fairhope's youth baseball program have signed to play with Spring Hill College next year. Congratulations to them and thank you to all our supportive parents. We want to welcome Ari Tillman to Fairhope. Ari? Ari is our new Nick Center manager. Ari's wife works for Whole Foods and they have a son who is 11-years-old. Ari is no stranger to the municipal environment, having worked for cities as varied as Austin, Seattle, Redmond, and Palm Beach. He has a lot of great ideas for the Nick Center with new activities and brings with him a rich history in parks and recreation experience and senior citizen lifestyle. Welcome Ari to the City of Fairhope. Glad to have you with us. We are always proud of the work and the service that our city employees provide our citizens, but when a whole department goes above and beyond, we want to brag about it. The gas business is a well-regulated industry. Each of the Fairhope Utilities, gas, each year the Fairhope Utilities Gas Department is subjected to an inspected, inspection by the Alabama Public Service Commission. And each year, we have historically incurred a violation or two. Every individual in our gas department has been working beyond diligently to correct those violations and to assure that they don't happen again. This is a big task when you realize our gas service goes all the way to Baymanet. This year, for the first time in 10 years, the department had no outstanding violations. Some of the improvements it made include developing safe, qualified, and trained workforce, an effort that we know will continue, installing approximately 2,700 right-of-way signs letting our citizens know where our pipelines are and what to do in case of a gas leak, painting all of our above-ground piping to eliminate atmospheric corrosion, which is a major factor in managing a gas system. As you drive through our gas territory, you can see signs of improvement as evidence progress is being made, but we know Terry will not let his men rest on their laurels as more improvements are planned. Congratulations to the crew in the gas department. You've raised the bar. Now, in case you didn't know it, and the reason the resolution was pulled is because we found out late today that we need to have ambassadors, but today is World Kindness Day. There are 28 nations of the world, including the United States, who are members of the World Kindness Movement. Tonight, the council was going to adopt a resolution supporting Fairhope's participation in World Kindness Day, but part of the program's efforts to keep kindness at the forefront of our minds is having world ambassadors. We had not yet appointed world ambassadors and that will happen at our next council meeting. We will be nominating our junior council as Fairhope's world ambassadors for World Kindness Movement. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Peter Hamilton of Point Clear to come forward and receive the mayor's proclamation. Mr. Hamilton brought World Kindness Day to our attention, has been an active member of the World Kindness Movement. Mr. Hamilton? Do you like to come up here? Welcome. All right. Whereas World Kindness Day is celebrated annually on the 13th of November, on this day, participants attempt to make the world a better place by celebrating and promoting good deeds and pledging acts of kindness, either as individuals or as organizations. And whereas World Kindness Day was first launched in 1998 by the World Kindness Movement, an organization formed at a 1997 Tokyo Conference of like-minded kindness organizations from around the world. And whereas there are currently over 28 nations involved in the World Kindness Movement, which is not affiliated with any religion or political movement, the mission is to create a kinder world by inspiring individuals and nations towards greater kindness, such as smiling and speaking to everyone, being helpful, being patient, listening to others and complimenting someone. And now therefore, be it resolved that Karen Wilson, Mayor of the City of Fairhope, hereby proclaim November 13th as Kindness Day in Fairhope in conjunction with the World Kindness Day Movement, and urge residents of the Fairhope community to attempt to make the world a better place by celebrating and promoting good deeds and pledging acts of kindness to enrich the lives of others. Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for their act of kindness in proclaiming today Kindness Day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to get a picture. And just remember, it takes a whole lot less energy to be kind than to be unkind. Thank you, and that's the mayor's report.
All right. Agenda item number three is public participation for agenda items. So if you have something concerning items eight and nine, and then 11 through 27, now is your opportunity to discuss those items. You'll be given three minutes. Remember, if you have something that is a non-agenda item, there will be an additional opportunity for public participation at the end of the agenda items.
Ron Allen, 6612 Willow Bridge Drive. I can't pass up this softball that was just tossed up in the air, and it concerns the report of the mayor. I would suggest that the city council and the mayor pass a resolution that says the mayor and the city council have a kindness year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else?
Ed Hamely, 133 Old Mill Road. So this is for agenda items as well?
Yes.
I think I have two on there. Both are for the Fairhope Point Clear, are for the Fairhope Sunset Rotary Club, two fundraisers we want to do that it's going to benefit the Rotary Youth Club. One is our annual tree sponsorship for the downtown lighted trees. We're doing that again. We put a tiny plaque on the base of the tree. The sponsors, we sell them for 250 bucks a piece and the money goes towards playground equipment, equipment at the club. And the other item is for our 0.5K race. Not everyone can do a 5K or a 10K, so we're doing a half K that goes from McCherry's to Bone and Barrel. We did it last year without incident and raised some good money, got a lot of people downtown. I think everybody enjoyed it. We've talked to the police and have them lined up to make sure everything goes well again, so. Any questions on that, just let us know.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anybody else to comment on agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Congress.
Just want to say happy belated Veterans Day to all our veterans out there, especially to my dad, Lieutenant Colonel Reed Conyers, to our very own Councilman Robert Brown, and anybody else in the audience, if you're a veteran, if you wouldn't mind just standing up and let us recognize you for a second. We appreciate your service. Two other things, just the 125th anniversary on Friday, and don't miss lighting the trees. If you've never been, it's a great event. That's it.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, thank you Jimmy. Want to thank Paige and whoever else helped set up with the veterans event at Fountain on the Bluff. It was a great event Monday. That's it.
I will second Jimmy's appreciation for our veterans and their service, and with that, I don't have any additional comments and we'll go straight into the agenda. Agenda item number five is a public hearing, an ordinance to amend zoning, a request to rezone the property of Anil K. Vera and Palavi Vera from R2 Medium Single Family Residential District to B1 Local Shopping District. The property is generally located at 303 Fells Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama. Will somebody introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance was introduced. Take it away.
Evening, Council. Mike Jeffries, Planning Department, one of the city planners. As you said, this is a request for Anil Vera to rezone a R2 zone piece of property to B1 up on your screen. They have the subject property outlined in green. You'll notice that it's inside the central business district. It is bordered by two R2 properties to the east and west, another R1 property to the north on the right side of your screen. It's just an aerial overview zoomed in. It is currently an existing house. As I said, it's to rezone this R2 piece of property and they want to convert the house into just a real estate office if the zoning change is requested, is approved. Here's just kind of a view outside showing the central business district and where this property is located in that. It's kind of in a corridor that everything that is aligned on the same side of the street is all continuous B1 zoning. So zoning to B1 would be applicable for this. It's in the central business district, so it makes sense that it is a business-zoned parcel. This is just a couple of pictures looking at the property from across the street on Fells, one looking northwest and one looking northeast. The properties that are currently zoned R2 that are beside it, that was important to note, that on the east side is Bay Shore Ballet Academy and on the west side is First Church of Christ Scientist. And the property I said is north is zoned B1 and it's a half-block of contiguous B1 zoning that's on the west side of Delamar and Morphe Avenue. Stats recommendation is to approve B to B1, excuse the typo if the initial was for B2 and they changed it to B1. The planning commission at their August 5th regular meeting recommended approval of the rezoning from R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District to B1 Local Shopping District with the following votes, all in favor with one exception being Chairman Lee Turner. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, anybody got any comments or questions on this?
No.
No?
No.
So I need to open up the public hearing at this point?
Yes, you do.
So I will open up the public hearing at this point. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and unless there is a vote for immediate consideration, this will lay over until the next council meeting. All right. That will lay over for two weeks or until the next, till the number 25th council meeting. All right. Moving forward, number eight is a final adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1510 known as the Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Ordinance Regarding Section 4 Wage and Salary Administration, 4.06 On-Call Employees, Adding Public Works and IT Employees and Magistrates. This is something we've discussed at length in work sessions and I think maybe at a council meeting also. Counsel, do you got any other discussion on this matter before we vote? No? All right. Clerk, do you have a question on that or is...
I'll make a motion we approve.
Got a motion for approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to work you guys hard. There's, I only got a one motion and one second, so I can't, got to jump on it. All right, so I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of final adoption, clerk, call the question.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance is adopted. Moving on, number nine is a resolution for the approval of the 2019-2020 budget.
A move we approve is presented.
Got any motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the 2019-2020 budget, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Oh, come on, that's not necessary.
Motion passes. Budget is adopted. Number 11 is the resolution that the City of Fairhope approves, the request from the Fairhope Sunset Rotary for an annual fundraiser and that they may proceed with plans to solicit adoption of the trees in the downtown Fairhope area for the purpose of raising money for the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club. This will enable a simple sign on the trees designating the sponsor of the tree. The resolution will remain in effect for the next three lighting of the tree celebration. We've talked about this before, this is a carryover from last year. Counsel, any discussion, comments?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is a resolution that the governing body, the City of Fairhope, hereby rejects bids for vegetation management for the electric department. This is something we discussed in the work session.
So moved.
Any additional questions, comments? All right, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 13 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Paul Davis Architecture PC to provide professional architecture services for ADA compliance at the Fairup Stadium property and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed of $12,000. Any comments, counsel?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 14 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Lieb Engineering Company LLC to provide professional engineering services for ADA compliance at the Fairup Stadium property and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed of $14,900. I think the original agenda said 14,000, but that should be $14,900. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions, counsel? With there being none, I'll, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 15 is a resolution to award bid number 41-19 for improvement to four electric substations for Project EL006-19 for the capital improvement plan to upgrade substations at Twin Beach, Nichols, Morphe, and Valanta for the electric department to Aubrey Sylvie Enterprises, Inc. with a total bid proposal of $4,950,000. Now, again, this is an agenda item for $4,950, but that is spread out over time.
Correct, that's spread out over three, the next three fiscal years. So this year would be Twin Beach and Nichols, next fiscal year would be Morphe or Fairhope if, we bid it for Morphe being worst-case scenario. If council doesn't give me approval to move forward with that, we'll go back to Fairhope and that'll be a change order, but it's not building a new substation, so it'll be less money. We bid worst-case scenario. So, and then 21 will be Valanta, or 22 would be Valanta.
And these are items that we've obviously planned for this expenditure.
Yes, sir. So those are the three substations I mentioned and the transformers I mentioned in the work session, that we're getting those on-site to begin this work.
Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments or discussion at this point?
I'd just say how important it is, I think, to get the electrical system upgraded and this is a large expense item in the overall utility upgrades that we're making, so thank you for your work on that.
Thanks for bringing it.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Item number 17 is a resolution to award bid number 002-20 for VOIP platform for the IT Department to harbor communication, oh, sorry, scratch, I skipped, abort. Go back. Number 16, to award bid number 004-20 for fiber optics internet services for the IT Department to Harbor Communications LLC with a total bid proposal of $10,800 per year, a total not to exceed $32,400 for the three-year agreement. Jeff explained this in the work session, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, with there being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Item number 17, to award bid number 002-20 for the VOIP platform for the IT Department to Harbor Communications LLC with a total bid proposal of $43,080. Again, we discussed this during the work session, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? With there being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to bid number 033-19 erosion control and stabilization of Rock Creek for an additional 2.5-inch-thick class three riprap lining with a brush mattress underlayment in the pool just downstream from the Rock Creek Bridge. This addition to the erosion control and stabilization of Rock Creek was due to unforeseen weather conditions of extreme heat and drought in late spring and extreme rainfall associated with tropical storm slash hurricane Barry in mid-July 2019, which increased the cost in an amount not to exceed $24,000, and award of that change order to Streamline Environmental LLC. Again, this is something that Richard explained to us during the work session. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions, counsel? With there being none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 19 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to bid number 040-19 well abandonment services for additional work to install 75 more feet of grout and 10 feet of hole plug in the 16-inch diameter hole, which added an additional day to the project. This addition to the well abandonment services was due to some sort of void in the wall casing, which increased the cost in the amount of $6,000, and award of the change order to M. and W. Drilling LLC. Kim gave us a wonderful explanation of this during the work session, and so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions, counsel? With there being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 20 is a resolution that the city council authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to temporarily fill the position of special events coordinator at a pay grade of 20 with a salary not to exceed the minimum of that grade and to allow the temporary employee to work up to 40 hours per week, which does not include benefits as long as the employee does not work over the 90 days or until special events coordinator returns to work plus seven working days. This is something we discussed in our budget meetings, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments, counsel? All right, with there being none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 21 is a resolution that the city council authorizes and approves the hiring of the new customer service rep one to allow the current customer service rep one to train the new employee prior to her leaving the 1st of January 2020. This will be beneficial to the city as well as the new hire. I discussed this a little bit in the work session, but I'll entertain a motion at this point.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Counsel, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this resolution? Hearing none, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 22 is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in right-ofways within the Verandas Phase Four for maintenance, and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Verandas LLC. Is there anything else to know about this? Any, anything odd for us to pay attention to?
[inaudible]
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 23 is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in right-ofways within Fairhope Falls Phase Two for maintenance, and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and TH Fairhope Falls 2018 LLC. Get anything for us to know special about this? Okay? All right, good. I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Number 24 is an appointment to the Tree Committee, and the appointment is Stacy Howell, and it will be for a three-year term, ending November of 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed, say nay. Howell is now appointed to the Tree Committee. All right, number 25 is a request of Ed Hamely with Fairhope Sunset Rotary requesting permission to use the city streets for a fundraising event that will benefit the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club on Saturday, January 11, 2020, for the second annual .5K run in We've heard from Mr. Hamely. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions, counsel?
Ed, y'all have physical therapists at the end of that race to work people down?
Yeah, we do. The Sueses will be there.
Okay.
Perfect, perfect. All right, with no additional comments or questions, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. 26 is an application for wine off-premises license by John Aaron Moore from Murphy Oil, USA, Inc., doing business as Murphy, USA, number 7506, located at 20390 Alabama State Highway 181, Fairhope, Alabama. Chief, you said everything's in order on this application? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next, item number 27, is something we walked on. It's a resolution that the City of Fairhope did request, receive, and open bids for site work and retaining wall for electric substation at Nichols Avenue and Young Street for the electric department. At the appointed time and place, the following bids were opened and tabulated as follows. There is attachment for these bids. After evaluating the bid, proposals would be required bid specifications. Cowball Construction LLC with a total bid proposal of $244,795 has now awarded the bid for site work and retaining wall for electric substation at Nichols Avenue and Young Street for the electric department. This is something Richard discussed with us briefly during the work session. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel, anybody got any questions or comments for Mr. Peterson regarding this work?
My understanding is this is the only bid?
Yes.
Of it?
All right. All right, any additional comments, questions? All right, hearing none, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, guys. Next is public participation for non-agenda items. So anybody left that's got something they'd like to bring to the council's attention, here is your opportunity, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Ron Hayes, 755 Morphe Avenue, here in Fairhope, and I have to tell you, I'm not Colonel Sanders' son, so I did not bring chicken, guys, so don't thank it. I am asking your help to have an organized safety program for the City of Fairhope. We do not, and we are in a crisis here in the City of Fairhope with workplace safety. Our men and women go out here every day and put their lives on the line, and I think we should honor them and help them. I've been working with Mayor Wilson for two and a half years now, trying to get this done, and I know Karen Wilson, she's a good person. Why in the world we have not been able to make any progress with this and come through with a good program, I don't know. I can tell you, I have done hundreds and hundreds of hours behind the scenes. I've done training, but we just now, y'all just approved a couple weeks ago, a safety coordinator. I tried to get that happened in early 2018, because I did the research before she became mayor, and we have had a problem for years with workplace safety here. No organized training, okay, no safety and health program, no policy and procedures, no budgets, nothing. They've just been going out doing, you know, their job, trying to do their job, and they're getting hurt. I've got one page that Ms. Hanks gave me, and she did a beautiful job on my last FOIA request, which took her a long time to do. One page of workers' comp information she just gave me, six cases of accidents and injuries, $92,000 we just paid for those accidents. Why can't we put money in a proactive way? Why does the citizens keep paying over and over? Why are we letting the employees get hurt? There's no reason for it. We're not covered under any federal entity. Cities, counties, municipalities are not covered, so there's nobody watching us. This is a moral issue as well as a safety issue. If we know there's a problem, why aren't we trying to fix it? I'm asking you guys to help these workers. My goal is to get these workers home safe and sound every day. I've already looked at my child's body in the morgue. I do not want any of these people's families to have to do that. It's ridiculous, when we have the way to fix this. And I've given the mayor the way to fix this for two and a half years now. I gave her the policy and procedure book that's never been finished, gave it to him last July. 16 months later, we still don't have a policy and procedure. The City of Fairhope has a four-page general safety program. It's the worst in the state, I can tell you. We spend no money on safety, because we don't have a safety budget, never have. They use discretionary funds to do some classes, and there was some classes done last year, because we took some of the men from Water and Sewer. The electrical department does classes every year, but there's no organization to it. It's just haphazard. They do these little, what they call toolbox talks for 15 minutes every week, that's it. But none of these people have been trained. One of the things I asked the mayor to do last year was let's send a couple of people to a 501 or 500 course with OSHA. That course lasts one week, and when the people leave, they are qualified to do the 10-hour OSHA course and the 30-hour trainer course. Then we would have some educated people that could do the safety training, but that never happened. The safety policy and procedure never happened, okay? The safety coordinator never happened until just a couple of weeks ago, when y'all approved it. Many things that I asked for that was not going to cost us a bunch of money, okay, and would prevented a lot of these accidents. If you look at these workers' comp accidents, you'll see they're stupid mistakes, because these people have not been trained properly. If an average person looked at these workers' comp pages, they would say, "We have the stupidest workers in the world," and I'm telling you, we don't. We have some great workers here. We have some honest people that come to work every day and just want to raise their family. That's all they want to do, okay? But we don't give them the tools properly. I've always been the kind that if I find out there's a problem, I try to fix the problem. I'm not trying to get a job, I don't want to work for you, okay? I want to help you. That's what I offered to Karen, February 8, 2017, and I cannot get this done, and I'm very frustrated with this, because I've given everything I can. I've spent my own money to buy books, to do training classes. I've spent, like I said, hundreds and hundreds of hours. I've met with Karen sometimes, multiple times a month. I've called her a lot. I've sent her lots of emails. I don't let things go. Anybody that knows me knows I'm going to keep going. So my last result is to come to you guys and ask you for help. I don't want help for myself, I'm fine. I want help for these men and women. You know, Ms. Hanks just gave me a FOIA request I had, and in 2016, I did a FOIA request with Ms. Pandora Heathcock at that time, and I wanted to know how many employees we had with the City of Fairhope that was covered under workers' comp. And she gave me the numbers, and she said it was 280 employees. So I asked Ms. Hanks, under my FOIA, the same question. Since 2017, we have onboarded 284 new employees. We brought them here with no safety program to protect them. We just throw them out there and let them go. I don't think that's right, okay? I think we owe it to these workers, to give them a safe and healthy workplace, okay? And I think the very least you guys could do is to bring an outside entity in here and let them investigate this. Let them talk to these workers, because these workers are starting to contact me by the droves, telling me stuff, giving me pictures, giving me documents, giving me times, issues, and I'm telling you, it is a pure mess. These people shouldn't be treated like this. They don't deserve it. Our city does not deserve to throw away all this money, and that's what we're doing. You might as well go right down to the bay, pitch that money in there. But the main thing on my mind and concern is, if we can spend $45,000 for new Christmas lights, or give a new contract for a company to put lights up for a couple hundred thousand dollars, why in the hell can't we spend a few dollars on safety and send these boys and girls home, safe and sound every night? They do a great job for us. We don't have that many problems, so I don't understand why we can't do it, but I think it's going to take you guys to do it. Now, I'm going to tell you right now, and it's up right now, I started a new Facebook page today, and it is Citizens for a Safe Workplace in the City of Fairhope, and I'm asking all the citizens in Fairhope, and it'd be more publicity about this, but I'm asking all the cities, citizens, to start watching for these workers working safely, and start contacting me, and giving me the information I need where we can move forward to help these guys work safe and sound. All I want, don't want a job, don't want no money, okay? Don't want no recognition. I've done all this for two and a half years, and you guys have never heard about it, because we didn't want it publicized. I wanted to get it in place. What I wanted to do, and this is what I told Karen the first day, let's reduce the workers' comp premium and accident on these workers, and then we could come to you maybe next year, the third year, and say, "Look, guys, we brought the workers' comp rate down, we brought the accident injury cost rate down. Now, let us have that money back for a safety budget." So I'm asking you guys tonight to make a commitment to help make this happen, not next week, not next month, not three years from now, like I've been doing, but right now, because I'm getting this Facebook page up, and I'm talking to workers, and we're going to have to make it happen ourselves, I guess, and I don't want that. All I would like to do is see immediately a safety budget, okay? A safety policy and procedure manual. They already have it, they just won't push it forward, okay? That's all I want to see. And I don't think that's asking for too much in a city that is wealthy as we are. I could see if we didn't have any money, I could see if nobody cares, but I know you guys care, and we've got to do something immediately. Please don't drag it out. Don't make me go any further, because I'm going to bring everybody in here that I can to look at this stuff. There's no reason for it. I think the world of these workers, I've already been there. I don't want them hurt. I don't want their family hurt, and you know they will be. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, appreciate it.
Thought I would respond to the last gentleman, and I couldn't disagree with anything you said, but I would like the council to be aware of something. My name's John Manellos, I live at 104 White Member. I'm one of the newly-appointed members to the Personnel Board, myself and another gentleman, and this is actually on the Personnel Board's radar. There's an 84-page safety policy and procedure handbook that I believe the mayor had forwarded on to the Personnel Board. Now, the Personnel Board does not meet monthly, it meets on an as-needed basis, so this has been sent out to the Personnel Board for review and comment. It is on, it is on the radar of the Personnel Board to review that, it's a fairly lengthy thing to review, but I didn't want you to leave with the impression that it had not been addressed by the mayor and that had been put before the Personnel Board to review, so may not be as quickly as what you'd like seeing. I can't speak for the past, all I can speak for is the present, so, but I wanted you to be aware that that was being looked at.
Thank you, John.
My name is Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street. I can speak and say thank you, Mr. Hayes and John, for that subject. For the last 12 years of my 35-year career with Casualty and Chemical Corporation, I was the Director of Safety and Training and Continuous Improvement Management. You can save a lot of money if you just lower your workers' comp cost by training and accountability. You've got to have training, but you've got to have accountability to those who are violating safety violations, so I support it 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Ben.
Evening. Dr. Lou Campanosi, President of the Common Sense Campaign. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I came tonight to talk about the two agenda items that were canceled. I'd still like to say a few things about them, because I think framing this along the lines of where I'm going with this is something that we need to think about. I know that you all have been exposed to various experts on planning. Sustainable development is something that's out there that... Sustainable development is something that's out there that lots of people buy into. It seems to me very difficult to maintain sustainable development, particularly in the school area, when you're chasing, you know, construction costs, dealing with population growth in the schools, and that's something that we've all been dealing with, and it's created so many problems, both politically and in terms of how to deal with these issues, okay? And the politics of it is one thing. Certainly, the 2015 70 to 30 loss that Bill Baldwin now folks had, had to do with the mismanagement of funds, in my view, okay? Dr. Lee just squandered $50 million, okay? Now, since then, what has happened is you've got a much better approach in terms of dealing with the construction issues, and I think I've said this in, in the forums that we had, Robert, where we basically agreed that the pay-as-you-go program works very well, but here's the difficulty, okay? As good as pay-as-you-go is, you have a situation where, just looking at the development in Highway 31, Rockwell Elementary had a new wing built, okay? Within a year, they had 14 portables. Within a year, they now have four more portables to accommodate the growth, okay? Now, growth is an issue we've all had problems with. These apartment buildings have been a particular part of this, I would argue, okay? So you have Rockwell, in my view, as an example of how growth has just created a dynamic that the schools can't keep up with, okay? If you look what's going on with Highway 13 and 64, there's another apartment developing there. Talked to Cecil Christenberry about it. Cecil's my board member where I live, okay? So Cecil is concerned about what's going to happen with Daphne Elementary and Daphne Middle, because you're talking about a lot of people who are going to flood into there. Now, how does this, you know, fit into this question about where we're going with these two apartment buildings that, that were tabled tonight? It seems to me that, that moving in the direction of allowing these projects to go forward, not in single housing developments, but, but as these huge apartment buildings that you see on 64 and 13, I think that that's something that's extremely troubling, and it's troubling from a number of perspectives, but it's particularly troubling from the standpoint of the schools. And I would argue that, you know, from a planning commission standpoint, Eddie Tyler, someone from the Board of Education, should be able to sit at the table and say, "Okay, these kinds of issues in terms of development, where we're going with these housing projects, are going to have X, Y, or Z, you know, impact on the schools." Think about that, okay? Right now, no one really wants to listen from, from the perspective of the schools, and I would argue that's a major fault that needs to be dealt with, okay? But you have a situation at this particular juncture where you all may be able to do something about this. Now, my understanding about this question about whether or not this, these two areas can be rezoned to something different that will prevent them from allowing these apartments to go forward, seems to be a bit complicated. I've heard that you all are in the process of wanting to annex it so that perhaps possibly you would go forward with, you know, controlling it a little bit better. I also am understanding, and perhaps the city attorney can help me with this, my understanding is, is that if we wanted to say no to these apartments, that there is another route to do this, and it goes along the lines of, if you can get 10% of the people who live in this planning zone to sign a petition, then the county commission has to allow it to happen. If that's the case, then it seems to me that's a default position that if annexation, if that's the case that you all are going for, if annexation doesn't work, or if annexation doesn't give us enough teeth to say no to this, then it seems to me that that's, that this whole idea of having a referendum makes a whole lot of sense. Again, from the standpoint of what everyone seems to buy into, into the, in terms of this sustainable development, you are on a path to make education unsustainable. We've already had issues with, with, over the property tax issue, and my point to Robert and Ken Cole was that, "Look, you're going to spend a million and a half dollars on a plus-up when the Board of Education has a major problem in terms of dealing with reading and math, okay? I think it's a Board of Education problem, but let me suggest something. We are going to be chasing this rabbit if these kinds of population growth, if the population growth continues to go unchecked." Now, how we deal with it, I don't know in, in the broad picture, but I do know that at least we seem to have a, we, we have a solution to, to something that we have a little bit more control over if we just take the time to think it through. And I would hope that before you even put it on the next agenda, that we do some sort of a public hearing and try to get some expert opinion about what we can do with this, okay? Thank you.
I realize I'm just one of many, received a letter from the City of Fairhope to get a business license.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anitisa Hyer. I live in Barnwell, and the problem is, I don't have a business. I'm renting occasionally a room in my home, which is less than 2,000 square feet, and I say, it's just occasionally during the summer. Right now, I don't have anyone with this business license problem. I already talked to Mayor Wilson and this, and found out that the council is not aware that my property taxes would double, because I went to the courthouse, to the revenue department, and they told me if I have a business license, if indeed I get a business license, my property taxes would double, which would be counterproductive for what little my income is with the, with the guests, because I'm so far out, I'm almost 10 miles south of Fairhope in the Barnwell community, and also I do not need Fairhope fire protection. I have the Barnwell Fire Department a mile from my home, so I would like the council to make a decision, and this, I would really appreciate if they look into it, and I would really appreciate very much if you could do this before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing no one, I will close public participation. The next item on our agenda is an executive session. I'll read the resolution here. As City Attorney Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request that the City Council go into executive session based on Section 36-25A-7A3 to discuss pending litigation and possible settlement options regarding said pending litigation. City Attorney McDowell has hereby declared that the City of, City Council of the City of Fairhope rise from regular City Council meeting on Wednesday, November 13, 2019, to go into executive session. The City Council shall be in executive session for approximately 20 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the City Council shall return to the City Council chambers to resume the regular City Council meeting. The time is 6:58. City Council exits the dais to go into executive session.
Ready to vote?
So I need a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor to go into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I said, I said 7:18, and it's 7:45. All right, are we back on, back live? Okay. All right, so, I need a, I guess a motion to add this resolution to the agenda?
So moved.
All right, we have a resolution that states as follows, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the City Council authorizes Counsel Matthew McDonald and Marcus McDowell to join in a motion with all parties requesting that the court enter the consent order for the Cali's litigation. I will, first off, I'll entertain a motion to add this to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the resolution is added, and now I will entertain a motion on the resolution itself.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, and I will entertain now a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and.
Second.
And a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.